Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order. This is 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, July the 2nd, 2024. We are in Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And I do want to remind each of you that you can watch this live on www.granberry.org/live. To, we have everybody here. All the council is present. So with that, we will start with the invocation with Pastor Alan Latta. If you'll lead us in prayer, please.
Father, we thank you for this day that we have made. We rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for air conditioning and the privilege and honor of being U.S. citizens and of being Texans. Lord, I ask for your blessing upon this meeting with wisdom to everyone who speaks, clarity of thought, minds to understand, and hearts to care. Lord, if you move forward toward the future in Granberry, Texas, we ask for your blessing. And thank you for the blessing in the past and in the future. In the Jesus' name and everybody's sake.
Thank you. Now, if you'll follow me in the pledge of allegiance and pledge of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to thee passes. One state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you again, Pastor Latta. And yes, thank you for air conditioning. And I forgot to mention that there's the pastor at Generations Church out on 377. So now we'll go on to number four, item number four, Proclaimations and Presentation. And City Council, City Manager issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would like to point out two events that stand some merit recognition tonight. On June 27th, there was a vehicular accident collision on 377 that involved an 18-wheeler hauling riprack rock, which are large boulders of concrete, like this big. And a large rock, they were hauling it eastbound to Arkansas. It made a mess. But this police officer, Zach Anderson, reported that City Streets employees Jeff and Cody, along with the fire marshal Kevin Jones, stopped to help clean up the roadway to allow the traffic to flow again. The thermometer was 101 degrees, and they were picking up every stone and moving them. And then they used a blower to clear the small debris out of the road as well. It solved a huge problem for the traffic. Otherwise, we would have been waiting for a different crew from somewhere, from the trucking company, to come and reclaim all their material and move it out of the way. So this is a good example of our people succeeding and getting things done, just flying under the radar and nobody knowing what they did. They just stepped up and did it on their own. And so it was pretty impressive. The traffic was backed up for a long ways prior to them being able to move the rock and stone. It wasn't little gravel. It was big chunks of rock the size of cantaloupes and bigger. So they worked at it, and it was very hot. So hats off to Cody and Kevin and Jeff for what they did on 377 that crashed. So thank you. Then we have another special effort that took place beginning about 1:00 AM this morning. There was a water leak discovered, a main transmission line, not just some little water leak that's on an 8-inch line. This is a 16-inch water line that was leaking. And when they began, finally got clearance to dig it up at 7:00 AM this morning. And it was a split pipe, PVC 16-inch pipe. And it had been improperly installed decades ago upon a bed of rock. And the rock had actually cracked the pipe to a length where the pipe was split for about eight to 10 feet. Those guys worked tirelessly this morning through the night trying to get everything lined up. Also, they accomplished it and got the water leak fixed today. So they've got to send off bacteria samples and have them tested before we can reactivate the line. But hats off to the Water Department for pitching together. There's six guys that did that work today in the heat. And you can't imagine how hot it is out there digging down in a hole with no breeze. So hats off to Paul Gast and his team for putting that together and saving us with that water problem. So thank y'all.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Obedear?
So I'm gonna take, I want to thank the City Manager as well as the entire city staff for preparing the draft 2024-2025 city budget that we reviewed in the Budget Workshop last week. I've reviewed city budgets in previous positions that I've held, and this one was the best in terms of preparation and in presentation. All the areas were clearly defined, and the items needed by each department were presented in the workshop document. It outlined not only the needs which were funded, but also outlined some of the wants that were unfunded. I think the budget will serve us well in meeting the needs of our community while still operating within our current tax rate. I look forward to seeing the results of this budget during the next fiscal year. Thank you, Chris. And thank you to all the staff here. Thank you.
We had two people that came to the review, Mr. Haye and Ms. Fay Landham. And they, everyone is welcome now. Many of you came as well. But that was, and I agree with you, Skip, and I think everybody agrees, that was just an outstanding presentation of some pretty hard work to get to where you got to. It was, it's good, and looking forward to making, implementing it over the 2025. I guess we approve it, what, next week?
September.
September. September. We'll see what happens between then and now. But it was outstanding. Others? Greg? No one? Okay. We can move on to public comments on agenda items. These are, these are items that are not listed as public hearings. And we have Mr. King, and we will call you when we go into that public hearing, or you can speak at this point in time, what, it'd be your choice. But I would say the public hearing probably be best. Okay. We'll move right on to that. I don't have anyone else, right? Got you. Okay. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, are previously discussed items that will be approved with one motion. And however, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under deliberation agenda. Anyone want to take any of these consent items off? I know that we've talked before. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Obedear makes a motion. Mr. Waller makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It is approved, 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will move to agenda item number seven, the deliberation agenda. We will go to 7.1. This is a public hearing. All three of these today are public hearings, keep me straight. And we'll open that after we hear the staff report. Mr. Kaufman?
Happy to do this, but I've got to log into the Duo security system to be able to get there. So bear with me a second.
Okay, this is gonna be for 7.1. It will be a public hearing. We will consider adopting ordinance number 24-36, approving the creation of a tax abatement reinvestment zone, the Granberry Reinvestment Zone Number Five at the Granberry Regional Airport.
Almost there. Good old security.
Good security.
So this is the follow-up to previous notices and things that have been posted in the paper. Simply, it creates the tax abatement environment reinvestment zone for, to be able to incentivize projects at the airport in the future. At this current time, we have no tax abatement agreements in place or being considered right now. So this is a proactive move that Lance helped us with as we move forward with economic development at the airport. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
As you said, there's nothing, nothing in the works right now.
That's right.
But this is, this puts us in a position where we have the ability, or not the ability, it'll come to, it'll come to council. We'll vote on what, whatever should happen, should we need it.
Should we, should we actually have a project come to fruition, there'll be a vote by the council to advertise it and provide 30 days' notice to the public, conduct a public hearing, and then consider the tax abatement agreement. But we have none at this point. We're just, I would say, setting the dining room table for activity later, should it happen. And this reinvestment zone will last for two years.
Other comments, questions? No? I'm gonna open the public meeting. Did anyone want to speak on item 7.1 here? I see no one rising or no hands risen, so I will close the public meeting. So all in favor of adopting ordinance number 24-36, approving the creation? Let me ask for a motion here. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan, thank you for pulling out of that. And Mr. Obedear. I have a motion, and I have a second. So all in favor of approving the public hearing agenda item 7.1, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, so that will be passing 6-0. Okay, 7.2. This is a public hearing also. We will open that in a few minutes. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-37, approving the request of Chris King for a specific use permit to allow for auto repair, major use in the heavy commercial zoning. This property is located at 4646 East Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a community development project, so I will turn it over to our Community Development Director, Kara Wawee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Chris? As we start off, we always provide you a site map. The location is on East Highway 377. The site is outlined in teal on your map. And to the east is a propane facility. To the west is a site that has been in the past used for automobile and boat types of operations. To the south across the highway is an automobile dealership. And to the north is unimproved property. And again, the request for this site is for automobile repair. In the past, it has been used for various automobile types of activities. So there have been other SUPs on the site. And the applicant is here this evening. He wants to expand that building that's shown on the property there, close to the right side of that teal rectangle. In association, he would be making improvements to expand the parking lot and to install some landscaping on the property. I am not advancing the slide. I think I need a little help there. Thank you. This map shows the surrounding zoning. The site is zoned HC, heavy commercial. In the HC district, SUP is required for heavy auto repair, which is the request. Heavy auto repair consists of things like bodywork and engine pullouts and replacements. And the pink color there is light commercial. In a light commercial district, similar uses, except light auto repair, like oil changes. And then auto sales is also available in that district. This is the site plan that the applicant has presented. You can see those little hatch marks to the left. Those are parking spaces. To the right is a vast area that is not shaded. That's the existing building. And to the up or the north side is a darker hatched area. That's the expansion of the building. So the site has access onto Highway 377 and proposing those improvements. With this application, there's no outdoor activity proposed. All the repair is proposed within the building. The zoning ordinance contains specific use permit guidance on making decisions, and these are tests of the surrounding area and compatibility of the proposed use. And staff's analysis, we find that all four and five, excuse me, five of these can be found in the favorable that the site will be compatible, and the adjacent uses are compatible to the proposed use. And then we also have in the zoning ordinance standards to conform with. And this site, again, has frontage on the Highway 377. There are businesses that are commercial surrounding the property, and the use appears to be appropriate for the general area. The Planning and Zoning Commission also made recommendations, and as you'll see here later, they recommended in favor and support the proposal. The site's already developed, and the new addition will contribute to the future use that's proposed. The council may impose conditions. Staff is recommending conditions, and the Plan Commission reflected those. These additional findings are criteria are in the zoning ordinance and do include the use needs to be in conformance with the city code as well as zoning ordinance, and also has some requirements for permitting. These are in your staff report as well. Public notice was provided to eight property owners within 200 feet of the property on May 30th. And we also published in the newspaper on May 25th, as is required by law. So there was writing, we've received no input either in favor nor in opposition to the Staff recommendation is, again, approval for the request. And we need either a charger, a new battery. Can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a 5-0 unanimous vote. And I had mentioned the conditions. I'm sorry, those were not on our slides, and they should have been. Condition requires a one-year term. The site plan adherence to the site plan is presented, and our standard conditions of the use permit being subject to the city code requirements, and finally, the use permit subject to other code requirements, including inspections. These are your voting options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vale?
Mayor? Kara, is this a, just clarification, is this a renewal, or is this a new SUP? And is it a new SUP because of the expansion?
It is a new SUP because the prior SUPs are no longer effective.
Okay.
And it is an expansion.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Obedear.
So Kara, this is, this is already zoned HC, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And in HC, auto repair major is allowed?
Yes, with a specific use permit. And that's what we're considering this evening.
Oh, it has to have a SUP, even though it's authorized to have the auto repair major?
It is.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. King, if you'd like to speak on this. You have any questions for Mr. King? Go ahead.
Hello. Just, I'd like to thank the council for considering the SUP. I understand that we're currently kind of already under the SUP, but we're following all the guidelines and all the ordinances that's required to, for our expansion and the beautification, obviously, of the property, because we're gonna redo the whole outside, expand the parking lot. We're gonna do shrubbery and some things that's gonna make it look really nice. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I think not. We're...
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for coming up. Ms. Wawee, thank you for the analysis here. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public meeting if there's no one else wants to speak. Okay. All right. So do I hear a motion to approve the SUP as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Go to 7.3. We're gonna consider approving the request of Kenneth Dixon to replat lots 45 and 46 of Catalina Bay 2, Phase 1, which is .857 acres, located at 1600 Chesapeake Bay Court. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, this is a community development project. I'll turn it over to Director Kara Wawee and let her review this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have this, the location map is in front of you. This site is on Chesapeake Bay Court. The applicant has two lots that they propose to join together to make one lot. You can see there's a house existing on one lot, and the other lot is unimproved. So it's to combine those two lots to make one lot. This is a replat. A replat occurs in these situations when a property is residential, that is zoned residential for the last five years. Then in the state law, it requires a public hearing. And it requires public notice to the neighbors so that they are aware of what's going on. The zoning on this property is PD. That will continue. It's not a zone change, it's just a plating application or request. And this drawing shows the replat. Where that dark line is, are some easements in the property line, those easements will be abandoned, and then the property will be joined. Easements will continue to be provided along the lot lines around the entire one lot that's created. Staff is recommending approval of the replat. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval on June 10th by a vote of 5 to 0. That was unanimous. And your voting options are to approve the replat or deny the replat. Let me back up here. We, we did send notice, as was required. I think we sent to 12 property owners. We received seven letters in response, all in support, and one letter from the HOA in support. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to add a clarification. Could you go back to the diagram of the replat document from the survey?
Sure.
I just want to verify verbally that that easement that's being vacated does not have utilities of any sort located within them.
It's my understanding there are none in that easement.
I just wanted to put that on the record.
Correct.
That we've verified that.
I understand.
So thank you.
Questions, other council? Any other questions? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on that, just raise your hand, come forward. I see no one that would like to speak on that, so we'll go ahead and take this to a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the request? Mr. Dixon here?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request for Kenneth Dixon to replant lots 45 and 46 in Catalina Bay 2.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan second's that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, we will now move to citizen comments. We have a, two people that have asked to speak. This is three minutes. Talked to the presiding officer. We can't respond, but we do like to make sure that we have your name and your address so that if we do need to get back to you, we certainly will. So, Mr. Tony Mobley?
Tony Mobley, 1505 Chelsea Bay Court. Hey, I'm just here to say thanks for moving ahead. This is really loud. With the wastewater treatment plant. So folks sitting up here need to realize what the delays have cost us on the infrastructure. You know, you get politicians up here wagging their fingers. They're either in office or running for office, and they're saying, don't do this, don't do that. What they don't consider is the delays. I have a new piece of developed property over in Acton Highway and Plaza Drive. The sewer line there is way over capacity, to the point where we had raw sewage smell running into the building. Now, thank goodness that there wasn't raw sewage on the floor of those buildings. Otherwise, I would have an attorney that would tell me not to be up here speaking. But it's always just a smell. I'd like to turn this around and say thank you to the staff, because I called here, because I have a tenant that would literally close the bathroom door, because that appeared to be where it was coming from. And she thought, well, it was okay, because it was just in the bathroom. It's embarrassing that we had to actually go through that process. We called the city. They called out Jim Cook, Paul Gast, Kevin, Fire Chief, and several others came out at 1:00 in the afternoon. And let me tell you, they are the sewer whisperers, because they found it within about 20 minutes. We found a temporary solution, which was venting an outside line. I've got a 10-foot, 10-foot-long, 4-inch pipe sticking up in the air. It's certainly not a permanent solution. So please hurry on this, because like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk to an attorney. I don't wanna threaten the city. But this is an absurd problem for the city that should never have happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Appreciate that. And now, Ms. Rebecca Metters, if you'd like to come up, please. And you did have some materials that you brought, and we have passed those back and forth through the council here. Thank you.
Mayor, City Manager, and Council, thank you for your time allowing me to speak today. And I'd like to bring to your attention some safety and liability issues arising from the dangerous conditions in the city dumpster enclosure that is in the center between North Houston Street, North Lambert, West Pearl, and West Bridge. All businesses along all of those streets use this one dumpster area that has four dumpsters in it. I forgot to mention, I own Silver Saddle Saloon, 124 North Houston Street. Issues include the absence of lighting. Although I met with the Director of Electrical about 18 months ago, his solution was to just add a wall-mounted light above the door, back door of Babes, which does not illuminate into the enclosed dumpster area at all. Broken dumpsters with lids and rods sticking out at eye level, grease-covered ground and clogged drain, excessive garbage causing maggot and fly infestation, broken glass, illegal dumping, illegal dumping, other safety concerns, including homeless persons, drug use in there, namely marijuana, public urination, and keeping in mind that several of the businesses that utilize that dumpster enclosure have employees under the age of 18, which is a major concern for me and my staff, and becomes a liability for me as well. In the pictures that I've distributed, you can see on the very last page, that is literally how dark it is in that dumpster area. It's pitch black. So when you have those obstacles coming at you at eye level, or the grease on the ground and the glass on the ground, you can't see it. If you've got somebody hiding behind a dumpster doing unlawful things, you don't see them until it's too late. It's very, very concerning, and I have employees that refuse to take trash out at that time, even those that are over 18. In my past history, when I managed department communities for 23 years, it was always the trash removal company's responsibility to pick up any trash that falls off whenever they're dumping. And that, from the time that I've been in business over five years, that's never occurred by the dumpster company. Silver Saddle and Babes, we are both pretty diligent about keeping things clean and picked up anytime there's broken glass and all of that. Babes will scrub the grease, but also means the proposed solutions that I have is overhead lighting for the area, or lighting on each of the four walls so that you can see throughout the dumpster area. Also, more frequent and thorough cleaning of the area and pest management. The other thing that I have to speak on is the alleyway traffic that connects West Pearl and West Bridge. Although it's marked and designated a commercial loading and unloading zone only, we consistently get through traffic, through traffic. get through traffic, through traffic flying through to bypass stop signs. They barrel through at high speeds and don't slow down for any pedestrians of any age. We, it is constant. I have done my best. I have a caution sign at the edge of my property line, and I also bottleneck it down with stations that encourage them to slow down, and then also make it visible that, hey, I need to slow down. But when you've got that many people outside and going back and forth, it's pretty obvious they just choose not to. My solution...
Ms. Matters?
Yes.
We're running a little bit over time.
Yeah. This, all I have is the solution left, is that okay? We, not that they read the signs anyway, but a no-through traffic sign at the entrance of the alley on West Pearl. A second do-not-enter sign has already been added to the West Bridge Street side. And then speed bumps in the alley on the city-owned portion, on the north end or south end of the alley, along the Babes area. And then one just before you get to that sidewalk at Bridge Street, that city portion owned, because they are barreling through at such a high speed that they are overlapping that sidewalk. And I've seen people on that sidewalk almost get hit.
Okay. Thank you. We do appreciate the visuals, too.
Yes.
That helps. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I also emailed a video of the dumpster area to Mr. Kaufman today. I didn't have a way to get it to be posted here, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we do have a executive session? Okay. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and close out this session, and we will move to the executive session, where we will have discussion of matters permitted by the following sections of Texas Government Code. 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we will go into executive session. Thank you. And now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes it to open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Gentlemen, any action that we need to be taking at this point? No? No? There is no action? There's no further business? I announce the meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.